We'll get our meeting called to order. Thank you for your patience. We'll begin with roll call.
All board members are present.
If you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda, we have public participation. I'd like to remind those who are wishing to speak before the board to please state your name and address for the board record. You will have three minutes. We have lights on the podium. Green will stay illuminated for the first two minutes. Yellow will signify when you have less than a minute remaining, and the red will light up and buzz when three minutes have been finished. So with that, I call Ron Ogil.
So my name's Ron Ogil. I live at 13811 Riverwood Way, Carmel, Indiana, around the west side. What I'm here for is to talk about freedom of speech issue that I'm dealing with with my son in Carmel High School. So I got this off the Center of Public Education. First Amendment's free speech clause requires courts and district, uh, school districts to weigh and balance two forceful ideas with occasional clash, the need for a safe orderly school environment conducive conducive to learning, the guaranteed American entitlement to speak or engage in expressive activities. Tinker versus Des Moines Independent Community District. The U.S. Supreme Court says it can hardly be argued that either students or teachers shed their constitutional rights to freedom of speech or expression at the schoolhouse gate. The principle outlined to prevail, school officials must demonstrate that this speech would provoke substantial disruption of school activities or invade the rights of others. The court said that fundamental right of freedom of expression cannot be squelched due to a mere desire to avoid the discomfort and unpleasantness that always accompanies an unpopular viewpoint. One technique for figuring this out was based upon forum analysis, using open forum, limited forum, or closed forum. Closed forum was classroom. A limited forum would be like a hallway and things like that. My son happened to be in a limited forum. Problem I have is why is the government the arbitrator of words that are good or bad? Where's this list at? That is the problem. Why does your skin color determine whether a word is good or bad and how you get punished? Bad. How is someone to know what word will set someone else off? For example, Trump sets some people off. Andrew Jackson, redneck, redskin, does this for me. If we start putting everyone in detention or suspension for any word that may be offensive to someone else, then no will be, no one will be in the classroom. I feel that my student has been wronged by the administrative staff at Carmel High School. I'm looking for justice for him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ogil. Next on our agenda, we have consent. May I have a motion to approve consent? Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Next, first action item, and we've got quite a few. We'll turn to Dr. Well.
Thank you, Leila. The first one is the strategic plan and communication expectations. The strategic plan is a timeline we reviewed at the board retreat. As I stated to the board, my memorandum to talk about this, we're going to take this and make it 2016, 17, 17, 18, and 18, 19, and beyond. We need to, we need to fix the 15, 16 and replace that. That'll be the next piece. But for today, we're approving the 2017, 18, and beyond, and I will clean this up with my leadership team. So it is still a three-year plan. Many of these are ongoing, but I'm telling you very openly, we need to take 15, 16 off. This will be a 16, 17, 17, 18, 18, 19, and beyond. But the big items this year conduct an elementary program evaluation, promote wellness for our students and staff, continue to develop leaders in students and staff, and promote cultural awareness. Those are very significant strategic initiatives this year, and we're continuing many, such as the implementation of the technology plan, the implementation of the learning management system Canvas, exploring flexible scheduling. That'll be a component of the elementary program evaluation. PD, those things in 16, 17 will all be ongoing too, so I'll fix that. But for the action tonight is to approve the 17, 18, and beyond new initiatives that were generated by stakeholder meetings with parents, students, teachers, and the leadership team, as well as shared at the board retreat.
Thank you. I went up for the questions.
I didn't realize 15, 16 was going to be dropped. So I have a question.
Let me clarify, Pam.
Oh, okay.
It's going to be cleaned up. Some of those will still be ongoing, so it'll be still a three-year model.
Alright, so like, teacher evaluation or staff performance, that'll continue legislative process. Those are things that will continue, so there will be things-
Those are ongoing.
Okay, thank you.
We're not getting rid of those. I just need to update the three-year piece.
Okay.
The folk, thank you.
Great. Then the second portion of this particular action item is the communication expectations.
Yes, and again, that is an item that was reviewed at the retreat. We review this actually twice a year. And again, the expectations are the board superintendent communication expectations, and I think we all appreciate the number seven. No surprise that we all work very diligently on that in this, in this business. Sometimes that's not easy to do, but I appreciate everyone on the board and the board willingness to continue to look at these and continue to work very diligently on communication. So this reflects the retreat as well.
Thank you. May I get a mo, questions? May I get a motion on the table to approve our strategic plan timeline as well as the superintendent board communication expectations?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any additional questions?
So just the, the motion needs to reflect that it, for the strategic plan, we're only approving the 2017, 18 items.
I would say we're approving the whole thing, but that with emphasis on the new items in 17, 18, because we're continuing many within the plan.
Okay, but so then I guess how are we approving something that we don't know what, what's going to move over and what's not going to move over?
That's fair. So for clarity, let's approve the 17, 18 initiatives in the strategic plan. Good point. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Perfect.
Good question.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the board superintendent communication expectations as well as the 17, 18 strategic plan timeline? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the adoption of policy 0121, personal background checks, criminal history check for a school. And we have since updated to include the language with why we are changing the policy. And I, first I'll just get a motion on the table to approve the criminal history check for school employees. Second?
Second.
Okay. We have these changes coming in before us because they have been amendments to Indiana Code 2026-10.5. You all have it in front of you, and I know we've seen it before, and we had it up last, at our last meeting. The proposed changes to the policy reflect the requirements of the law that went into effect, and we are just moving forward to be sure that we expand our criminal history check. Are there any questions? Yes?
So this is stuff, and we talked about this last meeting, this is stuff that we are already doing, but it is now Indiana law, and so we are incorporating this into our policies.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, policy 0121, as suggested by the policy committee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, adoption of policy 3500, teacher appreciation grant. Pam, do you want to run with this one?
Okay, this is brand new. This just came out, and this is something that is being required of the school systems at this time where we will need to adopt something every year and send it in as a school system. We have to look at the teacher evaluation plan as well as the teacher appreciation grant and how the funds will be distributed to the teachers. So we have put in place the percentage that we will be distinguishing between highly effective and effective teachers when we give the money to the teachers, usually in December when the money is distributed from the state. So this is new, and we will have to look at this every year.
May I get a motion on the table to approve new policy 3500, teacher appreciation grant?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And next, we have our 2017, 19 bus driver agreement. To that, we turn to Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This recommendation is for a two-year agreement with the Bus Drivers Association. That's in line with what the board did with other support staff members. The increase proposed is approximately a two-and-a-half percent increase, which is also equivalent to what was provided for other support staff members, and the Bus Drivers Association membership has ratified this proposal.
Thank you. I get a motion on the table for the 2017, 19 bus driver agreement.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
And if you are prepared, we're ready to move on to reports, Roger, and we have the presentation of the 2018 budgets.
Alright, thank you. Okay, as the board is aware, our budget is made up of six different funds. Each fund has a particular purpose. These are the six funds that are all supported by tax dollar revenues. So I'll begin the presentation with the general fund and the referendum fund. While these funds are kept separately in our accounting records, we typically combine them for this presentation because both funds are used for the same purpose, that is, for our general operating expenses. So beginning with the revenues, the state formula, which by the way is on a fiscal year basis, July 1st, June 30th, but our budget's built by requirement on a calendar year basis. So the state formula is really a, the revenue from that is a combination of really two fiscal years. And it's, we are assuming an increase in enrollment of 47 students for 17, 18, and we're providing, assuming about 2% additional funding from the formula in 2018, 2019. I'd point out that Carmel has did very well this biennium as far as the formulas compared to most districts. The average across the state in the first year per ADM was an increase of 1.1%. Carmel went up 2.8%. Now I hasten to add that that's because we're, as you know, we were also a very, one of the lowest funded school districts in the state, and so there was some movement on that, this biennium. And then in the second year, the state increase was one point, average was 1.3, and our increase was 2%. So having made some movement in the first year, it slows down a bit in the second. Then with regard to the referendum fund, as you know, we were very fortunate that our community highly supported our replacement referendum, and so we will receive, we've estimated about $3.3 million of increase in the referendum funding. On the expenditure side, the budget reflects an increase of 2.5% plus increment for salaries in both 17, 18, and 18, 19. In addition to that, there's an assumption of a .75% performance bonus for eligible non-teacher employees, and then the teacher appreciation grant this year is based on $30 per student. Now that's about $480,000. And last year, the grant, the performance grant for Carmel was 2.4 million. So we received significantly less, or will receive significantly less in the upcoming year. With regard to benefits, we did not have a premium increase this year for our health insurance, but we are, and projecting a 5% increase for 18, 19. I'd emphasize here that this is the fifth year that we've not increased insurance premiums, and so we have a number of employees who, fortunately for them, have never experienced an increase since they've been here. And so we're very pleased with that, of course. In fact, we believe that with a variety of efforts that we're doing, and certainly our employees are participating, because we have a, our insurance is self-funded, so it really goes to whatever the claims are. That's what drives the premium and the cost. And so as we've implemented a wellness initiative, opened our wellness center in 2013, we've not had an increase since then. We've done a number of other things, but financially, that's very meaningful. Of course, the most important thing is if our employees are generally healthier than they, they have been, that would be number one, but certainly there's a financial implication. And in fact, had we continued to have increases that we had prior to the five years, on average, we would have spent about $11 million. I understand we spend about, it's, the cost for our insurance program is about $17 million a year, so, but over those five years, if we'd had that average increase, it would have been, it would have cost the district about 11, and our employees, who share in the cost, of course, about $11 million. So that's, we think that's pretty significant. With regard to non-personnel expenses, such as property, non-controllable things, such as property and casualty insurance utilities, those are all based on, on the trends and the best information that we have. Of course, the area of things like utilities, the other half of that equation is the weather, and so our assumptions kind of assume an average year, nothing extreme one way or the other. And then on controllable costs, such as supplies and travel, we've increased two-and-a-half percent. With regard to revenue in more detail, you can see the first four items are property tax, excise tax, and so forth. Those are, that's reflecting the revenue from the referendum. And so you can see how significant that is. It's for 2018, it's about $18.5 million. You can see the largest revenue, of course, is the basic grant at $96.6 million. And you can see here again that the performance grant, now the appreciation grant, is just under $480,000 is the projection for that. When we get to expenditures, our salaries, the 69.1% is actually a little bit less than, than what it has been. That's directly related to the fact that the performance grant is considerably less this year. So that's kind of money in and money out, but it does affect that percentage. Under employee benefits, I would point out the health insurance. And you'll see while we haven't had a premium increase, that cost is going up. That's because we, in this budget, it reflects the inclusion of the cost of our, and liability of our early retirement incentive program. And so that's, the cost for that's now part of the general fund and the referendum fund. And then as we go to purchase services, you'll see that the professional service line is up considerably to $1.9 million. Again, that's really a shift, well, it's two or three things. That line consists of contracted nurses. As you may know, we are moving toward having contracted nurses rather than nurses being our employees in our schools, and we've done that for a number of years. We're moving in that direction as we have attrition in that, in that area. This is also includes summer school, which has increased because of the more and more online courses. So again, that's one of the increases, and then a couple of the other ones are the relationship we have with Carmel Police Department for our SRO officers. And then, then there are funds that come into the Carmel school districts that then are designated for non-public schools, and that, that amount has increased. So the increase is primarily an increase as we shift the nursing to contracted services. So of course, our salaries are, are going down for nurses while this is going up, and so there's a, there's a direct offset there. And then the other significant category of increase is the, the special ed funding coming in that finds its way to non-public schools, so we're kind of the pass-through for that. So it doesn't have significance in terms of, it is an increased cost, but it's more a shifting of costs. And then finally, I'd point out at the very bottom under light and power, you'll see that going up more than just a two or 3%. And that's because about $2.5 million of our utilities, and specifically electricity, are paid from our capital projects fund. But that amount has been frozen for a number of years in terms of what we can pay from that account. And so the entire increase for electricity falls to the general fund or the referendum fund. So it makes that number go up a little more than what you might expect. Okay, then under equipment and fixed assets, you can see here the capital outlay item from, goes from $100,000 to $194,000, almost $195,000. You'll see in the, in the detailed budget that you have that that, again, is another special ed expense that's going, coming in and then being transferred back to the, or to the non-public schools. So it's really in and out money on our part. So that gets us to a grand total for our budget of $119,606,981. And that's again for the, both the referendum fund and the general fund. So with those assumptions, we started in 2017 with just over $10.5 million of cash balance or operating balance. We projected to end the year at $9.2 million. Keep in mind that over this past 12 months, we've now retroactively paid for the 16, 17 contract with the Teachers Association. So that number was higher than what it would have been on January of '17, and then it'll come down some by the end of this year. Now, the same thing here for, projected for 2018. You'll see it, the, the cash balance is showing to drop to about $8.7 million. It may not, it may not drop as much, but, because when we build the budget, we will be, will tend to be conservative on revenue and a little bit liberal on expenses, because we don't want, we don't want to assume more revenue than we're going to receive, which may mean that we could get a little bit more. And likewise on the expenses. We don't want to present expenses and have them exceed what we're assuming. So because of that conservatism and, and the approach to a budget building process, this is what tends to come out the end, but it, it may be a little better than that. Now I'll go to the transportation fund. Similar situation here, although the transportation fund, in fact, all the rest of these funds now are funded with local tax dollars, primarily property tax, and also then excise tax and financial institution tax. Like the general fund, the referendum fund, the salaries in the transportation fund are assumed to be 2.5% plus increment, which you just approved for the bus drivers. And the non-personnel expenses are based on the current trends. So the same routine here. Our cash balance starts at $548,000 for January 1st. By the time we get to the end of the year, we're projecting a little bit more of about $709,000, and then back down a little bit to $610,000. So, so really what this is saying is we expect our transportation expenses as compared to revenue to be pretty even and pretty level, and we feel we're in, we're in good shape with transportation. We don't have excessive operating balance, but we think it's an adequate balance. Then the next fund, bus replacement fund, again, same thing. Revenue's based on latest estimates, and this is again from property tax and excise tax. And we have a, a 12-year bus replacement plan, and so 2018 year for this, we're assuming to replace 14 buses. And so here you can see, we start with an operating balance, but by, by the end of this budget year, 2018, we're showing a zero balance. That's by design. We don't really need a balance in the transport, in the bus replacement fund because the only thing that comes from that is the purchase of the, of the new buses. And, but what happens to the extent that they're, the buses come in less than what we've anticipated, which they typically will, because again, we, we don't want to plan to buy buses and not have enough money to buy them. So as a result of that, that takes you to the next year with a beginning operating balance. So what we've chosen to do this year for '18 is to use that operating balance of about $250,000 as a partial offset to what we, the loss we will experience with our circuit breaker. So we have to, once our budget's approved, eventually the state will come back and say, "But you have, you have, you're going to get this much less because of the circuit breaker," and then we have a choice as to what funds that comes, that comes out of, although it cannot come from the debt service fund, the operating balance, but it can come from transportation, bus replacement, and capital projects fund. So our plan here is to use what little bit of cash balance we have in the bus replacement fund to partially offset what we know, what that loss will be when we eventually receive it from the state. Then we go to debt service fund. Again, the revenue to pay off our debt comes from local sources. We currently have two bond issues through a lease rental through the, through a building, school corporation building, holding corporation, and we, we had three relatively small general obligation bonds. The 2014 bond, though, will be paid off this year. So as we get into '18, you see the detail on '18 budget, you'll see payments for two, the 15 and 16 bonds, 14 bonds will be paid off, and of course, that was by design. All of these general obligation bonds are very short-term, three, four, five years at the most, and they'll be paid off. So in the debt service fund, you can see the assumed revenues and expenses here. In the debt service fund, our older debt, we were permitted to carry a 50% operating balance or 50% of whatever the, the payment was for the upcoming year. In newer bonds, and this has been going on probably since about 2014, anything, anything since then, you're permitted to carry a 15% operating balance. So, so the, over time, even if our debt's replaced and so forth, over time, the cash balance in the debt service fund will, will come down from what it historically has been for that reason. And so that's not really a problem for us. It's a slight problem in that we, we, we use that operating balance as a part of our overall cash that's available. And so, so we'll have a little bit less in terms of cash for, for all the funds, it, just from, you know, during the school years for cash flow purposes. It doesn't shift from one fund to the other. It's just temporary for cash flow as we go through the year. But other than that, it really is fairly insignificant for us. Then we go to the, the capital projects fund. So we have a budget for the capital projects fund. Like the transportation fund, we also have a plan. And the, the capital projects is a three-year plan rather than a 12-year plan for the, as it is with the buses. There's some information here about our facilities, and the board and the public can see that we have a little over 2.8 million square feet of space in 15 schools and two transportation facilities, administration building and an auxiliary building. That's, that's the building across the street where our wellness center is at from the high school. A little over 700 acres of property, and these facilities are valued for insurance at just over $441 million. As I said, in the capital projects, we're required to have a, a three-year plan. However, it's the first year that really matters in the sense that that's the year that the board's going to recommend- that the board's going to recommend a tax rate and will actually, you know, collect revenue to support the first year of that plan. As with any plan, years two and three are subject to change as we have better information as we go forward. Currently, the, this plan is first controlled by a maximum tax rate, and our tax rate's just under, maximum is just under 21 cents. And in this year, that provided a levy of 14.9 million dollars. Now, we didn't receive that much because when the circuit breaker came, we, we lost about a million dollars. But that's where we start. And again, it's from local property taxes and excise tax. You see here, the first year of the plan, we're estimating revenues of a little over 15.5 million dollars. And with those assumptions, we, we start the year here with a cash balance of just over 2 million dollars. Ultimately, you see it goes, it grows to about 3 million. Unlike the other funds, this is a capital fund, that balance at the first of the year is, in and of itself, is not particularly meaningful because we may be in the middle of a construction project or a project that carries over the year. And so to the extent we haven't, you know, finished the projects, and then the balance on the first, at any given point will depend on how far along we are on the project. So it doesn't have the same meaning as in the general fund where the expenses are primarily salary and benefits and very, somewhat even across the months. So this balance will fluctuate more. Oops, sorry. So that's the end of this presentation. I will share with you that in the packet that you have, you have a draft copy of the detail of the budget. And included in that is a calendar, a kind of a schedule of events for the budget. And so if the board approves going forward to advertise these budgets and plans, the next thing that will happen is on September the 25th, there will be a public hearing, give opportunity for the public to have input to the, to the budget and to the, to the two plans. And then on October the 23rd, at the regularly scheduled meeting, the board will be asked to adopt the budget and the plans. Then those, then the budget is sent to the state for review by the Department of Local Government Finance. And ultimately, after, we, we must have their approval for these budgets and plans. And then they'll be put in place January 1st. So with that, I will attempt to respond to questions that you might have.
Um, I actually just have my first question, then I'll open it back up, and then I'll have a few others.
Okay.
Looks like on this budget schedule, you have on August 28th, you're requesting permission to advertise.
For a hearing.
For a hearing.
Yes.
So typically, that's an action item. Do we need to add that as an action item?
Yes.
For today?
Noticed it wasn't a yes.
Okay.
That would be recommended. Because again, we're asking the board to act on permitting the advertisement of this, but we're not asking any action on your part as far as adopting it or approving it. But just to move the process to where there's opportunity for public input.
Okay. So let's do that before we ask questions about the proposed budget. Anyway, I need to get a motion on the table to give the administration permission to advertise for public hearing regarding the 2018 budgets, the 2018 to 2020 three-year CPF plan and the 12-year bus replacement plan.
So move.
I get a second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Fantastic. Next, we'll open up the floor to questions about the budget that was presented by Roger. Katie.
Um, just for a frame of reference, so we talked about the SRO pay on there.
Mm-hmm, yes.
What percentage, or you don't have to give me specifics, but do we pay all of their salary? Do we share it with the city? How does that work?
Essentially, share it with the city. From memory, I believe the agreement says that the city will provide at least two SRO officers and I believe two uniformed officers. But what we have is, we have two uniformed officers, but we, but we have SROs in each of the three middles, or each of the three middle schools as well as the high school. So we have four, not two. So there's definitely a sharing of cost associated with the total, actual cost of our Carmel police officers.
And then my second question is, what happens to buses that we replace? So if we buy a new bus, what happens to the old one?
The old, we trade them in. This is a part of the process.
Okay.
Thank you. Right, I have one quick question with regard to the SRO.
Aye.
I believe it was last budget cycle, the state had grant money to help offset the cost of SROs. Can you speak to that, please?
Yes, for a number of years, I'm not sure how far back it goes now, but we received 50,000, a 50,000 dollar grant, security grant, which goes toward the cost of the SROs.
Thank you. Mike.
Not really a budget cost, but when I heard about the bus, the bus replacement made me think about it, and Katie's question made me think further. I mean, I'm assuming we've looked into alternative fuel options and the recommendation will be made, whether that makes sense or not makes sense.
Well, we actually are doing that now. I don't know the exact number at this point, but we have at least five and maybe at least five propane buses. We started that a few years ago. And you saw, over our transportation facility, you'll see the big propane tank right outside the bus lot.
And is that going well?
It is.
Do we like the fuel?
It is. It's not, and we knew this, but I mean, it's, it's not saving money or a lot of money. It's not costing a lot of money either, but we really, the focus was first on the environment and so forth. It wasn't done primarily to save money.
Okay. Next, Mike, do you have any more that you'd like to ask at this time? Pam.
Yes. I was wondering, we usually, is the list of renovation projects for schools, is that in the big budget?
It's not because we don't, we don't have any in there. With the impact with the circuit breaker, we, we, this year, we don't, we don't have what otherwise would be as a major project that we would call them, out of the capital projects. And that's what we've been using bond, general obligation bonds for those in the last couple of years.
Well, we usually had a list of projections when different schools would be supposed to be receiving renovations or additions.
Yes. But what I'm saying is, is this, in this budget, those, we don't have those funded with these budgets. They're, if, to the extent they're being done, they're, they're being done. The projects at the high school, for example, we put some new finishes in there this past year, those are out of general obligation bonds, not, not these, not the capital budget.
Okay.
And when, and we did the GO bonds, we did have a list of that.
Yeah, the three-year bonds.
Yeah. Same way at Town Meadow. It, what, what in previous years might have been done with capital funds, more recently, those, those larger projects have been done with bonds.
Oh, all right. Also, in 2018, funds will be pooled because you're going to have two funds. Which of the six, I forget?
2019.
2019.
Yeah. And so next year, this, this time next year, this presentation will be
Totally different.
Different than it has been for the last 40 years.
So which funds will remain?
Of these funds, the referendum fund will remain, debt service fund will remain.
Is it bus replacement?
Nope, that's it. The other funds will be basically collapsed into either referendum fund, I'm sorry, either operational fund or an educational fund.
Okay. So since we have the bus replacement already funded for 12 years, already listed, will we continue to have that section?
I believe so. Some of this is not completely clear yet, which is why they, they passed the legislation, but they gave a year to kind of work out the details, you might say. So within the operational fund, as I understand it, there, there will still be a bus replacement plan.
Okay.
And there'll still be a capital projects fund plan. But the funding will be, and there'll be separate levies for those as well, as there is now. But on the, but they'll be collapsed into
But on the books, it'll look like all one.
It'll be, it'll be within the operational fund. But you might compare it to our general fund where it'll be in one fund, but, but there will be categories so that you can say, within this operational fund, here's how much for buses, for example.
Okay.
And so the, the accounting structure, you can still identify what you're spending on transportation or in buses versus capital projects, for example.
Okay. One more question. I know money follows the student, so when we have students who come to Carmel schools because of the, they're employees, they're employed here, but they're, they live outside of the Carmel district.
Yep.
Does that money just go into the, the general pool, or they're not considered transfer students?
They're not considered transfer students. The whole idea of transfer tuition and transfer students kind of is, is not meaningful anymore since the state is funding the general fund. Because what happens is, is when we, when we count the students, we just count the students, so it doesn't matter where they came from.
Okay.
And then, of course, we're funded from the state based on how many students.
So it's just in the regular A D M count?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions? And Roger, I do appreciate you answering my three questions that I had sent on Friday throughout the course of your presentation. Next on the agenda then, we've got the monthly financial update. Into that, we turn to Roger.
Okay. Let me get to my other show. Okay. So at the end of this month, you'll see that we get down to the bottom and our cash balance is 12.3 million. Again, next month, you'll see that come down because the retroactive payment and so forth for the 1617 contract settlement will be out of that number. And so that'll drop rather significantly next month, but, but not beyond where we would expect it to be. And so we're pretty much right on track with where we would expect it this time of the year.
Pam?
Yeah, I was just wondering, collectively, what was the stipend worth for the teachers this, this year?
Just a little over a million dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
And then Roger, could you speak to where our cash balance percentage will be once we have the retroactive payout come out of the expense?
Well, again, we, we really tend to focus on, on the cash balance on June 30th. But we watch it every month, of course. Prior to fiscal year funding, it was January 1st. But now, in recent years, it's, we kind of target June 30th. So it varies because, again, in the context of 120 million dollars of expenses, at any day that you look at the balance, you also have to understand what encumbrances are, it's kind of like if their purchase order is outstanding, payments, you know, you kind of have made the commitment, but you haven't paid the expense yet. So you can have things like that. You can have things that, maybe something was delayed and it was pushed into the next month. But to answer your question, we, we've been trying to, we, our intent is to maintain a minimum of 8% balance. We may drop a little below that by, essentially by this time next year. But again, when we, when we recommended the salary proposals and the teacher's contract and so forth, we took all that into consideration. So we, we're in a very stable, I believe, financial condition. We certainly don't have excess cash balance. You know, I would be, I would like to have a little bit more, and, you know, just being the financial person, but, but we're, we're where we said we should be in terms of maintaining that minimum. So, but it is a minimum, not, not a maximum.
Great, thank you. Other questions? Mike?
I guess just since technically we're halfway through the year, historically, for property taxes, do we get more than 50% in the first payment for people paying early? And now this year, we're at 45%. For, I guess it's the first line on the report, although at the end.
Well, we're not, yeah, the answer is yes, we received more in the first half and the second, about 54, 55%, which is what this is showing. We have 45% remaining. So we've, we've received more than half.
Thank you. I was reading it backwards. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, great. Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
We look forward to hearing more about this. And as we have additional questions, when we review more in depth this tomb of information, we will get back to you.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll move on to our board workshop topics. Dr. Wall.
Thank you. On the workshop topics, this is a draft, and we do this annually. These are focused on strategic initiatives within our plan. And, and they're subject to change as based on some of the things we're doing and the needs. Also, remember, we have board, I'll have reports, either myself or, you know, Amy or one of my team to talk about things. For instance, we'll have a report this year on the implementation of the math program. And as we know, we've recently been approached by the SROs to do a report at a meeting. So there will be, this is subject to some change, but this is, this is our guide. And these things are very strong initiatives within our plan. As you know, we did school finance in August, we're looking at the wellness initiatives in September. That's a, that's a very large initiative, not only for our students, but for our staff. S E L practice in place in our building in October. Continue to amplify CCS, that's more updates on our technology integration that's ongoing. And then we talk about devices in January. That'll be a very interesting presentation because, as you know, we had a rollout last year of three different devices for teachers and for student learning. And the technology committee is gathering feedback from our teachers to see what they liked, what they didn't like, and make a recommendation on phase two. Science program evaluation in February. In our strategic plan, we talk about what is the brand of Carmel Clay Schools? That's something to start at the first A L T this past month. Asking our leaders, what is our brand? So that'll be evolving, and we'll share some feedback with you. As well as, I think it will be a nice spring board for the six-month board retreat to talk about the branding from a board perspective, too, resulting in a presentation in March. Staff performance evaluation plan, that is an ongoing initiative. And we want to give CTA a chance to work with us and see where they want to go with that, with them together. And obviously, the elementary program evaluation I mentioned earlier is going to be a significant initiative this year in how we do business. We're going to give an overview on that process in just a moment as well.
Okay. I've got a quick question.
You bet.
Branding CCS, will we be including our potential website changes and Canvas integration? Or where does that fall? Because that's a really big initiative that we've been looking
Yeah, it would be
To learn more about.
All of those. That's a good point. And we are looking at changing our web platform as a district. We did some review of that this summer, and we do not feel our web platform is one that we can enhance. It's time for a change. Our tech individuals cannot do that in the summer, so that's going to be something that we look at this fall. Another thing, we have Canvas now for going into year two, and that has been and become a replacement for many of our teacher websites, which is exactly what we wanted to do. It's a learning management system, LMS. So that was a natural progression, that we're going to look at our website this fall. And yes, that's all part of our brand. So very excited for that initiative.
Other questions? Great, moving right along.
All right. And then just a little overview that Amy and I will give about the program evaluation process. It's going to be very similar to what we did when we did the middle school program evaluation, now going on three years ago. This is the process in general, just the overview, that each program evaluation goes through. What's the current reality? What does research say? What are the findings based on research, current reality? And what are the recommended, recommendations based on the findings? So that is the process. And we have parents, teachers, and administrators on the committee. And the current, and you can see below them, the current review practice and research, collected, analyzed, determined
and analyze, determine strengths and needs, and then develop recommendations below. That's the overall process. And then, page two will be similar to what we did with the middle school program evaluation, and it's going to be in different components. And I'm going to let Amy review this, because this does come out of curriculum instruction assessment, and the components that we're still looking forward to this year. Amy?
Yes, thank you. And so, our elementary program evaluation, as you can imagine, looking at elementary programming, it's quite a big initiative to undertake. And just as we did with the middle school, we have chunked this up into smaller program evaluation groups. And some of these, we've already looked at, and some are also those ongoing program evaluations, like when we, with literacy and math and science and social studies. So last year, we completed some program evaluations where we looked at our high ability, and that was a, that was an ongoing one that we started actually the previous year with our high ability program evaluation. And you saw, we presented to the board some recommendations from that. So we'll need to take those recommendations and look at what does that mean for elementary programming? Also, last year, with the implement, with the new federal law, the S L law, we needed to look at our continuum of services and our multi-tiered systems of support for our special education as well. And so, that is another committee that we convened last year and looked at, what do we need to do in the elementary specifically? And looking also at our services for our English learners, what does that need to look like? So looking at those differentiation ones. Also, as I said, the, we'll take recommendations that we've done in the past from our literacy program evaluation, which we've done a couple of years ago, social studies, and math, which we just completed last year, and science, which we'll complete this year, and look at what does that mean for our elementary programming? Some other subcommittees that are, have yet to meet, they will meet this year, will look at our innovation. And when we're talking about innovation, we're looking at, obviously, our technology integration, which was an ongoing initiative that we're looking at. Also, there are new state standards in K through five, computer science standards, that we will need to implement within the elementary programming. Also, we'll be looking at problem, project-based learning, we'll be looking at inquiry, we'll be looking at maker opportunities, as you have seen, and we've done some different board workshops on maker spaces. But how do we get that innovation, that creativity? And then, we'll also be looking at our media services in our elementary programming and what that looks like. That will all come in with our innovation subgroup. And then, another big initiative, too, that we'll look at yet this fall, will be our wellness. So looking at those developmentally appropriate practices for the elementary level across the curriculum, across the school day, what does that look like for our K through five students? What should that look like? Also, another initiative that we'll be folding into this is our embedded S E L, and looking at the castle standards for social emotional learning, and embedding those pieces into it. Also, some things, and Dr. Wall shared this with you at a previous board meeting, but we've been looking at the structured and unstructured play, as well as the role of recess. And that will all come into that wellness subgroup with program evaluation. And as Dr. Wall said, all of these committees have teachers, parents, and administrators on these committees. So we'll take all of those recommendations from those different program evaluation subgroups or smaller groups, and then we'll look at those, and then we'll be, we'll operationalize that into an action plan of what will the elementary programming look like? And our goal is to have recommendations to Dr. Wall by mid-year, because as, as we look at this programming, you know, looking at the structure of the day, possibly looking at the length of the day, that there'll be other ramifications along the way as far as with busing, with, you know, all the pieces, all the inner pieces that intertwine with that. So all of those recommendations, then, will be, as you can see in the funnel in our graphic here, they'll come through, we'll look at those recommendations. And what is that programming that we want for our students in Carmel Clay Schools and the elementary? And then, how will we make that happen?
I agree.
Would it be the intent, then, that we will initiate these best practices in the fall of '18?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, continuing on what the recommendations are, with the middle school program evaluation, we unpack those over a two-year period. So I qualify, kind of temper that, because middle schooler's so much, we want to make sure we incrementally implemented the recommendations. But that, the goal is definitely implementation of recommendations next year.
Thank you. Two questions, Katie?
So you mentioned that, I'm just going to clarify what you said, that there's not just one group committee, there's multiple committees varying on what particular topic it is?
Correct.
And then, that, all of that information will be presented to you?
No, all of those recommendations that we will have are, the action plan group will be made up of administrators looking at, okay, here are the recommendations, now what would this need to, how could we make this work? How can we take all of those recommendations and put them into an action plan? And that is very similar to what we did with our middle school program evaluation, where we operationalized. We had four, actually, four different groups, smaller groups, and then we looked at, okay, here are the recommendations from these different groups, and then how do we operationalize that?
And then, you said they're made up of teachers, administrators, and parents? And how are those people chosen?
Correct. So our teachers, we work with, our association with CTA to look at recommending teachers for this, and we want to have a wide variety of stakeholders. For our parents, we will share a school messenger and ask parents if they're interested, that they can contact their child's principal at their school. And then, again, we'll look at the pool of volunteers that we have, and we'll choose from, so we can have a cross-representation of all of our different schools, of different grade levels in there, so that we can have a wide variety.
Very cool. Thank you.
And we send that school messenger out tomorrow to parents, elementary parents, see if they're interested.
Lynn?
Oh, as elementary school parent, and first of all, I want to thank you, thank the district administration and the group evaluation, evaluation group to take the initiative, evaluating the elementary school program. And I know that many parents are as excited as me to see positive changes, you know, coming to our kids. And also, in my experience, I know many parents look forward to the changes, and they also want to participate either directly or indirectly, or at least be informed about the changes. I noticed you say that in the mid-year, then, action plan committee will make a recommendation to Dr. Wall, and is that right? The mid-year will be recommendation to him? And the workshop topic showing that in June, then, there will be a, like a comprehensive presentation here at the board workshop? So I wonder if there's any communications in between those big keys, you know, key points that you will send out, the updates of your work, that's one thing. And second, if you haven't done so, I would suggest that the program evaluation group here, to think about encouraging the elementary school principals, teachers, and P D Os to include the, like, first, we're going to select the committee, the groups, and then, second, we're going to update it, and to include such information in your regular communications with parents, because this is where parents get most of the information and pay attention to. And that way, I think that at the end, when we see changes, parents will be more likely, more happy to see, you know, to embrace those changes, to appreciate the work by the group.
And so, and to make sure that we are communicating along the way, just as we did with our middle school program evaluation, we had different updates. The board had several different updates as well, as far as where we were along the way. We also did work with our P T O coordinating council to do updates, to communicate with them as well. Also, we are going to be using a new tool to try to get as many parents to participate. The tool that we're going to be looking at using is, it's called Thought Exchange, and it's where parents can answer, respond to open-ended feedback, and then they can mark with feedback with other, what other parents have said. So they have the opportunity to actually interact, so it's like a focus group, but virtual focus group. So that'll be a way, too, to make sure that we're gathering and we're hearing all of the voices of our stakeholders, not just with our parents, but with our staff as well.
Okay, and you mentioned there will be some parent representatives on the committee, on the groups. I definitely, I know that those parents will talk about their opinions, perspectives. Do, do you also expect those parents to be liaisons with other parents at their schools or in that area, in your neighborhood, or something like that? Or you just want the parents go to the Thought Exchange or contact a committee?
Right. Well, when, when committee members work on a program evaluation, they're not there just to put their, their input in. It's there, it's actually a working committee where they're looking at data. So they'll be analyzing student data, they'll be analyzing perceptual data that we receive, and it's not just putting their own input into that piece. So we'll be gathering a lot, a variety of different data from all of our stakeholders to look at. And then, those committee members will be the ones that will be, actually, it's the working group, to really look at, to delve into, what does the research say? What is currently happening? And then, what will be, what are the trends that we're seeing? And the recommendations come from where we have, here's what the current research says, here's what we currently have going on, here are our strengths, and here are our areas of need, and the recommendations come out of that. Peace.
Okay, thank you.
Great questions. Any additional questions?
Yes, I just want to make sure, you, you talked about the, the people that are coming out of the buildings to be on the various committees. Will they be talking to teachers prior to coming to the committee meetings, so that they have a feel of what the staff is saying about that particular area? Or are they going to take that information back to the staff after they've already discussed it?
Well, again, we're the committee members, they will, in, in times, and we've done different things over different program evaluations, sometimes they go back and they conduct focus groups, very specific focus groups based around the questions of inquiry that are developed by the committee in, back in their own buildings, that they do that, you know, there will be trying some virtual focus groups as well. So it'll, it'll depend. But no, we don't want, you know, coming in, we don't ask them to say, "Get all the perceptions of everybody and represent that in the, right as you come in." Because again, it's that working group. As you come on, when you come into the committee structure, you're there to really look at, to delve into the research, to delve into what are the standards say, to delve into what does the data tell us, and, and how are we analyzing that data? And then, determining what those trends are. So there may be some pieces where they go back and ask for feedback in a very structured focus group piece. So it just depends on where the committees go in as far as when they develop their questions of inquiry.
I, I just think it's very important that we keep all of the teachers informed throughout this whole process, because they're all in the classrooms, not just the people that are on the committees.
Right.
So they also have opinions about these programs and, you know, how they, they've been working with them for a long time, and, and how they should be perceived or worked with. So I just want to make sure that all of them are included. I also want to make sure, going back to my old days, that we're still talking about prep time for teachers, because we're not, we're working that into this discussion about how much time the teachers will have during the day to prepare for all of this. And are we going to hear about the impact on the other schools, like the middle school and the high school, if we're projecting to change the day for the elementary schools? That's, that's another concern of mine. And I didn't hear a whole lot about STEAM or STEM in this evaluation.
Prep, I'm going to say yes. Articulation, K-12, absolutely. That's a big component of this. When it gets down to the length and structure of they, that has to be articulated, K-12.
Right.
STEAM and STEM, I'll give to you-
STEAM and STEM comes out of the innovation group that will be working with, they're looking at creativity, they're looking at inquiry, that, so all of those pieces with STEAM and STEM, they're looking at the computer science standards, that's all within STEAM and STEM.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have other questions for the evaluation process? Thank you for bringing that before us. We are very excited to see that unfold. Next, we have our legislative update, and I know Mike has prepared a couple of different slides for us to review.
Thank you. I circulated before the meeting a very rough draft of Carmel Clay Schools 2018 legislative priorities. And I will just start out by saying that we will not adopt the priorities until October. So we have a lot of time between now and then to come up with them, but I started with broad ideas, and I will just kind of go over the process for the new board members. Basically, I started with what were our priorities last year, and then tried to take off those that had either already been taken care of by the last legislative session. And then, I added to them, and that's what's up on the screen now, the I S B A, the Indiana School Board Association's proposed 2018 legislative priorities that will be approved on, I believe it's October 2nd. And so, as you'll note, at the top of our priorities, we say aligned with I S B A priorities. The reason we say aligned with is because we don't necessarily adopt all the things that they adopt, and we adopt some things that they don't adopt. So that's how I came up with the first draft. I want to thank everybody for their quick comments to those points with little turnaround. And so, some of these, one of the comments was that we've got 14, and really, there's a couple more, that I need to confirm whether the code sections already changed or not. So another comment that I received was to group these, last year's priorities, we had grouped into kind of major categories with subcategories. I started to do that, but then, as I was doing it, it seemed like they were all under financial. I think as they get whittled down, we will, if that makes sense, do that again. One of the things I did add that wasn't on there before was that our guiding principles start with students at the center of every decision and end with fiscal responsibility is fundamental to achieving our vision. And I just thought that was nice, the way our guiding principles, the first one and the last one, really summarize all the reason that we're doing, working with our legislators. So I thought that was nice. We'll have to see how it works out with space, because I think it's important that we keep this to two pages, two sides. What else we've done in the past is we've had a legislative priority and then discussion point. At one point, we didn't share all of those with our legislators. Last, starting last year, we put them on there so that when we go into a meeting, they have everything in front of them, they don't have to listen to us explain that, just because some meetings, we actually go through it, some, they've already reviewed them in advance. One thing that I'd like to add, just based upon the topics that were discussed today, is something about concern for circuit breaker and the effect that that has on schools, just because I think while we've been fortunate that it hasn't affected us horribly, it's still a big number in other districts it has affected. And then, that's, I guess, the perfect segue. In the past, we have felt that we have a role to lobby our legislators for all public schools. And so, some of these things are, may not apply to us today, but are still our legislative priorities. And I guess the other two big comments that I've received before the meeting is whether we want to include some of these things, because this is a non-budget year, a short session. And I personally see two sides to that coin. One is I want our message to be consistent. The flip side is, obviously, I don't want to waste our limited space and their limited, limited time on things that can't be addressed currently. So, I mean, I see that as a balancing. I'm happy to go over in as much detail as we want tonight, or I'm happy to, you know, get comments and come back with a revised draft. get comments and come back with a revised draft at whenever it's appropriate to be on the calendar.
Well, we do have lots of opportunity to discuss, and if we did want to go the route of you taking our feedback, as well as, you know, your perception of how we feel, maybe revamp it and then have it as a discussion topic at our workshop next month, we could do that. If there's any specific comments that board members would like to make now with regards to the recommendations or the proposed draft, as we all know, it is a working, a working draft. So if you have things that you'd like to share now, please raise your hand and start chatting.
Yes, I went back and looked at our legislative priorities since 2015, and we have done them several different ways, but we basically agreed in 16 and 17, we had the, the general items of funding, referendum, and student testing were the three that we had put down as our three general topics. And then we included other, and transportation was one year. Then we included anything that went along with that as talking points or bullet points underneath that, so that it was just one general fun heading, so our legislators knew what each item pertained to. I personally think just a list of items, it's harder to read, it's harder to understand how, what, what these pertain to. I think there's a couple that, like you said, because this isn't a long session, it's a couple of these probably should be addressed maybe the next year. Number six, assistance for financially distressed schools. I understand that we are, we are trying to also include other school systems in our legislative priorities, but in the past, we have also agreed that our legislative priorities would be, would pertain to our basics, to our school district, and not be general across the state. That's ISBA's job, is to make a general priority. And so our priorities are more specific to what we need. So as much as I want to help financially distressed schools, I don't think that necessarily pertains to us at this point. Capital referendum language, I do want to see that changed, but now that we have our referendum, thanks to our referendum committee, we have seven years to change this language. And so therefore, I think it might, you might look at that. The grading of schools, again, that is a state issue, and I think that needs to be addressed at the, at the state, through ISBA. On the teacher evaluations, I think you don't have a statement of what you want them to do with teacher evaluations. So we might look at number 12 and come up with something a little bit more specific on that one. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Pam. Katie?
Kind of piggybacking on that one, the, for the, for their proposed ones for our district, the ones that really stuck out to me are ones that would directly influence the families that are in our district. And I really liked about tax credits allowed for public schools, how right now, if you donate to a public school, you don't get a tax deduction for that. And also how that there should be a tax deduction for our school textbooks and supplies, how that is not currently. So I think those are two things that would directly impact all of our students and their families that perhaps that we could try to focus on while there's not the big picture items in this, necessarily, the session. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. My two cents, I do like the categories. I did put all the, all 14 into basically six different categories, so we could pick and choose which categories we'd like to pursue. And I will send that to in an email.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Next report, we have Katie.
I have the opportunity to serve on the Carmel Clay Parkson Recreation Board, and one of the great things about that is they are the, in charge of our extended school enrichment, our after-school care. They are set up at all 11 elementary schools. And they also offer full-day camps during the summer and most school breaks. This past summer, they had over 7,000 children participate in summer camp. That was very exciting for our parents who work and kids who just want to do things throughout the summer. We just had a report, the extended school enrichment reported 102% cost recovery, so the program is doing very good. They are implementing, as of the 15th of this month, a 3% rate increase to take effect for the 2017, 2018 year. Since the inception of the program, it's been customary to increase the rates every other year to, due to operating expenses, due to staff merit increases and inflation factors. All of these rate increases are within the limits that are permissible under their contract with the Carmel Clay School Corporation. So that's, they're still within that boundary. The students who do participate in that, the food is through a contract with food services through Carmel Clay Schools, they sing high praises. They are very happy, and the students are very happy with breakfast and the snacks that they are getting in the afternoon, so they are very happy with that relationship. They have 27 full-time employees that work with EFC and between 100 and 125 part-time employees that serve at each of our buildings. They've already started the year, every, rates, they have different options for paying. You can do monthly passes, weekly, they can do punch cards for between, for and after school care. With this, they also do have a four-tier scholarship program that they offer that's based on federal policy guidelines. So there is the options available for people who are having income issues with that. So is there any questions I can answer? That's all I have for report.
Thank you. Pam?
I just want to say, I think the after-school program has been very well received, and they've done a super job, and I'm very glad we have that as a partnership.
I'd echo those sentiments. It really has been a very positive relationship. And there are a number of students who go even though their parents stay home, because it's just really exciting, and there's fun activities after school. So I applaud the schools for working out that relationship, gosh, almost 10 years ago.
At least.
Any other questions? Dr. Wall, I know we had discussed the calendar committee going to convene soon. Could you speak to that for us?
Yeah, under upcoming meetings. September is approaching, if we can believe that or not. Labor Day is a week from today. Workshop, the 11th, in September, the district calendar committee will convene. What we're going to do, and we're going to change the process, as I told you, we're a year, we should move this up a year so our families can plan. So we're going to expedite 18, 19 calendar and get that posted for our families. And then that committee's going to stay together and then look real carefully at 19, 20, and 20, 21, and do some stakeholder feedback on balanced calendar and all those kinds of things. But for 18, 19, we have an obligation to get that out. So we're going to get that committee convened in September, get a calendar in front of our exclusive rep, CTA, and then get a few in the board to act on promptly in October so that our families will know what's going on. And then the other two years will take a little more time with the committee, but I wanted to give you a heads up on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the board have any other questions for Dr. Wall this evening? Okay. Well, thank you, everybody, for your patience.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.